I I think we are. You want to start, wait?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, we are in in progress, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, court order and statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting dates on the municipal bulletin board, by sending a copy to the Echo Sentinel, and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Any hearing conducted by the board is a quasi judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Meeting cutoff announcement is made that as a matter of procedure, it is the intention of the zoning board of adjustment not to continue any meeting asked any matter past ten thirty P M. At any regular or special meeting of the board unless the motion is passed by the members then present to extend the meeting for a later specified cutoff time. Pledge of allegiance, would you uh lead us, Brian?
Yep, sorry. I'll get the flag, hold on, hold on.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with both liberty and justice.
Thank you. Okay, we have the oath of office. We have the pleasure of of bumping Scott up and a pleasure of getting a new member, alternate number one, Benjamin Lindeman.
Do you want to do roll call first, or no?
No, we do roll call after.
Because there you can't take their role until.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Hane and Mr. Lindeman, you guys have your oaths in front of you?
Yes, I do. Let me get it.
It's easier to follow along.
Got it.
All right, gentlemen, if you can raise your hands, right hand. I state your name.
I'm Lindeman.
I'm Hane.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of New Jersey.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in the state.
Stated under.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
Did the authority of people?
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all duties of the zoning board of adjustment.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the zoning board of adjustment, number one.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And I will not use my office to grant preferential treatment, nor seek personal gain, favor, or advantage not available to the general public. So help me God.
And that I will not use my office to grant preferential treatment, or seek personal gain, or favor, or advantage not available to the general public. So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, guys.
Congratulations, fellas.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Debbie, do you want the sworn members to come in and sign, or send it to electronically?
Uh, they can send it to me electronically, but also I I do prefer that they drop a hard copy off at the office for our clerks.
Excellent.
Office.
Is the building closed? Do they have to put it in the mailbox, or what's the status?
They'll have to put it in the mailbox for now.
Okay, just so we know, you have to put it in that little mailbox on the by the front door.
Can I have a question? When I drop that off, can I include the dog license fee I have to do?
No.
Okay.
No.
Sorry.
Okay, moving right along to the roll call, which is in alphabetical order as a reminder to everybody, since this is the reorg meeting for the first. Uh, Mr. Aronio.
Here.
Mr. Gianakis.
Here.
Mr. Correct.
Here.
Mr. Grosskopf.
Here.
Mr. Hane.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Lindeman.
Here.
And Mr. Rosenberg.
Here.
All right, zoning board, we have a quorum.
Right, sounds good. You want to take over for calling the elections?
Absolutely. So now we are to the election of our chairman, illustrious chairman. I will open the floor to any nominations for uh board chairman for the year.
I move that Ed Correct be board chair this year.
Thank you.
Okay.
Second.
The second by Mr. Rosenberg. Do we have any other nominations for board chair? All right, there being none, we're going to close the uh nominations and we will have the vote. Mr. Grosskopf?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Aronio?
Yes.
Mr. Gianakis?
Yes.
Mr. Correct?
Yes.
Mr. Hane?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Lindeman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Chairman Correct.
Thank you for your confidence, guys. I appreciate it. Now, uh, I'd like to uh make a motion to nominate uh Brian Johnson for vice chairman.
I'll second that.
Okay, any other nominations for vice chairman? All right, there being none, we will close the floor. This the motion was made by Chairman Correct. Uh Chairman Correct?
Yes.
Was seconded by Mr. Gianakis. Mr. Gianakis?
Um.
Mr. Aronio?
Yes.
Mr. Grosskopf?
Yes.
Mr. Hane?
Yep.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Lindeman?
Yes.
And Mr. Rosenberg?
Have to make it unanimous, yes.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Vice Chairman Johnson.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thanks. Thanks to everybody for your confidence in us. Uh, we'll try not to screw it up too bad. Um. All right, now we have the board appointment resolutions. The uh, we have the board will appoint a board secretary to serve until January seventeen, two thousand twenty-three. Do I hear a motion to move the appointment of board secretary? Um, to be Deborah Kuntz uh for the year of two thousand twenty-three. I mean, twenty-two until twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, very good.
Okay, Vice Chairman Johnson?
Yes.
Chairman, uh, Mr. Grosskopf?
Yes.
Mr. Aronio?
Yes.
Mr. Gianakis?
Yes.
Mr. Hane?
Absolutely.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Lindeman?
Yes.
Chairman Correct?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Uh, okay, now we have the board will appoint a legal firm, board attorney, to serve at the pleasure of the board for a term expiring on January seventeen, two thousand twenty-three for the calendar year of two thousand twenty-two and into uh one meeting at the January of two thousand twenty-three. Do I hear a motion to move the resolution uh to appoint Ventura, Messowitz, K O, and Warner as our attorneys?
So moved.
Second. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, Vice Chairman Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Aronio?
Yes.
Mr. Gianakis?
Yes.
Mr. Grosskopf?
Yes.
Mr. Hane?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Lindeman?
Yes.
And Chairman Correct?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we're moving right along here. Uh, now, the board will appoint a a engineering firm, professional engineer to serve at the pleasure of the board for a term expiring January seventeen, two thousand twenty-three. Do I hear a motion to hold on, to appoint the firm of Mark McDonald for our engineer for the uh calendar year of twenty twenty-two expiring in January seventeen, two thousand twenty-three?
So moved.
Second.
Vice Chairman, Vice Chairman Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Grosskopf?
Yes.
Mr. Aronio?
Yes.
Mr. Gianakis?
Yes.
Mr. Hane?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Lindeman?
Yes.
And Chairman Correct?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next one, the board will appoint a planning firm, professional planner, to serve at the pleasure of the board for a term expiring January seventeen, two thousand twenty-three. Do I hear a motion to move as our board planner? Hold on there, I almost passed it. Um. Hold on, gotta find it here. Oh, where is it?
That's.
Oh, here it is. I'm sorry. Uh, Phillips Press, Greco, Laney, and Hughes as our board planner.
So moved.
Thank you.
Okay, Vice Chairman Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Aronio?
Yes.
Mr. Gianakis?
Yes.
Mr. Grosskopf?
Yes.
Mr. Hane? I think I heard a yes, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lindeman?
Yes.
And Chairman Correct?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, now we have one more. We have, you're welcome, Liz. It's always a pleasure. Uh, the board will appoint alternate engineering firm, professional engineer, and planning firm, professional planner, in such case that either board professional have a conflict of interest with a specific application for development. Now, if you scroll down to the alternate appointment.
And this one, Mr. Chairman, this is a new resolution for this year because in the past couple of years, both boards have had um a situation where our engineer had a conflict, so we pulled in our township engineer, so.
I thought this was new one, but it's a good idea because we don't be wanting, and if there's a, there's a conflict. So according to this resolution, resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh five dash Z B, appointment of alternate engineering and planning consultants. The alternate um engineer is Fariao Engineering, Inc., and the alternate planner is Jay Cardwell and Associates, L L C, both of which serve at the, as the township uh planner and engineer. Uh, do I hear a motion to move that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, Vice Chairman Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Aronio?
Yes.
Mr. Gianakis?
Yes.
Mr. Grosskopf?
Yes.
Mr. Hane?
Yes.
Mr. Lindeman?
Yes.
And Chairman Correct?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. So now, number ten, the board procedure resolutions. We can pass all of them in one time, or do we have to do them separately?
Now, the, yeah, these can be an all in favor motion and a second all in favor, yes, with these resolutions.
Do I hear a motion to approve the twenty twenty-two meeting schedule, the remote meeting protocols, the notice of publication, the resolutions for our applications, and the meeting cutoff?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? No, great.
All right, great. All right, we don't have the minutes, right?
No, because I apparently forgot to send them out, so I apologize.
We'll do it next time. Not a big deal.
Okay, I guess the three day weekend got in my head, you know.
Yeah. Now, the resolutions, what do we have? Um, what do we have?
That I'm gonna let uh let a board attorney, Kaplan, handle that.
The the two wireless carriers with uh new antenna on the new towers, both of those are with their attorneys. And we're just waiting for a final okay, so we're gonna carry this to the next meeting, and everybody should have Ken trotted.
Right, guys, we have the resolution for the wild tech, wild tech, whatever. Uh, all right, did everybody have a chance to look at the resolution? Application number twenty-one dash one eight Z. Three ten Elm Street and Sterling, block one three zero zero four, lot twenty-two point zero one. Is that, did everybody have a chance to redo it? Okay, are there any changes or corrections that they feel, any typos that they saw? Not hearing none? Okay, do I hear a motion to move that resolution?
So moved.
Second. Second, okay, who's it, who's uh?
I'm gonna say, uh, Mr. Kaplan, could you just confirm, besides Vice Chairman Johnson and Mr. Hane, who is eligible to vote? I'm sorry, I don't have it with in front of me.
See, is it at the end of the resolution?
Aronio is ineligible. I'm not eligible.
You're not, then why use your name down there?
When was the, when did we do, I can, I can pull it up really quick. Hold on, when did we approve that application? November or December?
Good question.
I think it was December, the one that I missed in December, I think. I'm not sure, though. Hold me on that one.
I think it says December twenty-first, twenty twenty-one?
Yeah, that doesn't help me, can't.
It says hearing date, December twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, hold on, let me see if I can get into my computer and work really quick.
I have Mr. Chair. Tom, the vice chair. Uh, Michael is nowhere longer here. Jill Robinson's not here. Mr. Rosenberg, Mr. Hane. And Mr. Gianakis.
Mr. Okay, great, thank you. All right, so a motion was made by Mr. Vice Chair Johnson. Mr. Johnson? Fisher?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Hane?
Yes.
Mr. Gianakis?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
And Chairman Correct?
Yes.
Forgot me. You forgot me.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Grosskopf. I apologize.
Maybe I'll say no.
I'll be a negative milli.
Thank you. Motion carries.
All right, um. All right, let me see what we have. Oh, we have, now it's time for the application.
Now we can let, yes, now we can bring him in.
Let him in. Hopefully, we can see everybody.
Bill Kaufman, I just promoted you. Um, I'm assuming this I think Chris is probably anyone else who's in our attendees, if you need to be promoted to the panelist for this application, please raise your hand. Bill, I'm assuming that, yes, Chris, okay. Okay, Chris, I just promoted him. So Bill, is it just you and Chris tonight?
I guess, I believe so.
Okay.
Can we see you, Chris?
You should be able to. I don't have anything blocked.
We still can't see you.
Okay, just a second.
Make sure you got the camera turned on.
It kicked me out when I got promoted, just a second.
Okay. Yeah, make sure you don't have any paper over to my, over to the camera.
No, I don't.
Oh, there you are. All right, nice to see you.
Nice to be seen.
You just went away again.
Uh-oh.
That's all you get, Chair. That's all you, he's alive, he's real.
I exist for everybody.
Listen, just give us a second so we can see you swear in.
Yeah, right. After that, we don't really have to see you.
See if I can get it going again. I don't know what happened.
Yeah, put a second mouse on it.
Yeah, exactly. Gotta get the gerbils running.
It's me.
Swear in fast.
Create a screenshot and
Go ahead, John.
All right, Mr. Kaufman, if you raise your right hand.
You do.
Testimony you're about to give this evening, you swear the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
All right, would you swear in our, our experts, please?
Liz, Samantha? Testimony you're about to give this evening, you swear the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. I do, yes.
Okay, uh, Mr. Siazza. Uh, it's your, would you want Mr. Kaufman to take the lead on on this one, or how do you want this to work?
Yes, please, unless he'd rather than I do it.
Okay, no, it's fine with us. I mean, whatever you think is best. I mean, we have your application before us, but uh uh, maybe, why don't you start off by telling us exact, just give us an overview of what it is and why you need to do it?
Sure, it's no problem at all. Um, I'd like to add a basement entrance to the house, basically for convenience because it's a lot of trouble getting in from the backyard when I'm gardening, or we have the pool back there now. And also just for safety, when I'm down there, there's no other way to get out when I'm doing the laundry and everything else, so basically just the convenience and secondarily a safety issue.
Okay, and the need for this variance is because of ground coverage, right?
That's correct. The lot is undersized, as I understand it, so because of that, um, I I'm I think at or slightly above the limit of impermeable coverage, so I I have to ask for the variance.
Okay, all right. Okay, uh, Bill, you're gonna be the first witness?
Sure.
Okay.
Can we see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Before you start, Mr. Kaufman?
Yes, sir.
Please just identify yourself, your name, address.
Right, I'm sorry.
Credentials?
Yes, my name's William Kaufman. Um, my place of business is one nine three two Long Hill Road, Millington, New Jersey. I'm the principal owner of Westsketch Architecture and Construction. Um, I am a registered licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. Uh, my license is current. I've appeared before many boards, including this one just last month.
And as an applicant, so you got.
And as an applicant. I prefer to be on this side, actually. I have to be honest with you.
We, we accept you as an, as an expert. All right, thank you.
Uh, okay, so um, for the new members, um, they're gonna be christened here with a really controversial and riveting testimony and uh and big project, um, should really uh keep their juices flowing. This is essentially, I I can't really say more than Mr. Kaz already explained. It's a, it's a simple eager stare to a basement. I'm just gonna point out exhibit G one oh one, the exhibits I'm referring to are in your packet. Uh, the Geo one oh one sheet is the general information sheet. The lower right-hand side of that sheet um is a drawing. I can't read because my screen is this little things in the way. Already my testimony is halted. A nine is the proposed site plan. Uh, we can see that the uh, the subject property is um a corner lot, and by the standards that are set forth in the um, in the zone uh, the R let me just get my, if I get the wrong number, I think it's R five. R five, I'm sorry, not R five. What zone were we in? Help me out here.
R two.
Tipped up my own numbers here. It's too small even on my big screen. Uh, in the R two zone, the minimum lot size is uh, the required lot size is forty-five thousand square feet. The subject property uh is thirty-nine, um, thirty-two thousand nine hundred eighty-two square feet. Um, so it's a significant uh deficiency there uh in lot size. Um, I'll jump right sort of to the punchline here, just for the board's edification. If it were just a standard size, we'd be roughly around sixteen percent total lot coverage. We wouldn't be here before this board, so it's not even a matter of um, you know, just a tweaking of the numbers. It's clearly this is the, the, the full hardship of this application. Um, the lot is populated with a residence, a single family residence to the south of the uh rear of the lot is a, is an existing ground pool, uh, and there is an existing um small shed uh in the southwest corner, southeast corner of the property as well. Uh, there's a driveway that approaches the, the property from the north. The proposal is a uh less than six feet by eight and a half feet. Um, I'm referring now to a sheet, A one oh one of my architectural set. Um, we're adding um a small concrete uh retaining wall and then some concrete steps that lead to the basement. Most of you have seen this kind of a thing. There's not really anything too elaborate, exciting about it. It's just simply a neat uh, an eager stair um formed in concrete. The sheet A three oh one shows a cross section of how this works. Um, it's actually a more efficient stair than a regular stair because it, it doesn't have to uh protrude into the yard because of the way the overhang is uh situated on the house. You can see by the cross section on A one, um, it's sort of, the, the door is sort of set back underneath the frame of the house, allowing us to utilize the absolute minimum of additional lot coverage. Um, just some photos, uh, A nine oh one of the, of the subject property. Uh, it's pretty clear from all these pictures that the uh, the property owner takes really good care of this property, it's well maintained and well groomed, manicured. Um, the house, the area in question is the picture is depicted in uh picture, best in picture number five, which is taken from the rear where the pool is. So the staircase um sort of tucked around the corner, you won't be able to see it really from anywhere. Um, and then there's a little picture of the shed, just so the board can see. Um, the shed is not part of this application so far. It's not being proposed. It just happens to be a shed that's on the survey that apparently was not on record um, with the municipality. Um, so we've noticed for it, um, it's uh, in its current location because it appeared on a uh, on a survey. Um, and so we thought we'd clear the air with the board and see if there's any objection to having it existing. It doesn't count toward lot coverage, it's sitting on gravel according to the ordinance, uh, but we wanted to let everyone know it wasn't a dilapidated beat up old shed. It was part of the, it's consistent with the uh, with the, with the rest of the house. Um, essentially, I just wrap this whole thing up by just saying that, um, you know, I've already stated that we've uh, that, that we have a hardship given the size of the lot. We, you know, we feel it's consistent with the current zoning, uh, and there's certainly no detriment to the community to be granting this to the board to grant a variance here. Um, improves the safety and, and value of the house, uh, and uh, really doesn't, it's below ground for the most part, can't even be seen from anywhere else. So uh, its impact is uh, is really um insignificant. Uh, and that's really the essence of, I think, anything I need to say unless the board has questions for me.
Uh, just to get it straight, you're also asking to have us allow the shed?
Correct. I, I don't know that we, you know, this is uh, I, I think, we noticed for this because it was brought up. I don't know if it was in the engineer's report or the zoning officer's report, um, and it was just something that we felt we should bring to the board's attention because it's a conflict and let, you know.
Um, all right, that's fine. I just want to get that straight.
Ask for a clarification? On the shed?
Certainly.
Okay, could, could we turn the screen off for a second?
Yeah, you can turn your shed screen off.
Um, so you, I heard you say, Bill, that the um did you do the design on this house as well?
No, we did not. All we're doing is the uh, is the little stair bump out.
Okay, it's a really, it's Chris, it's a wonderful job you've done over there. I drive past all of them. Um, you, you, you comment, you made the, a comment that it doesn't count towards ground coverage because it's on gravel. Uh, and, and I've seen the gravel ordinance change throughout the years, but the shed has a roof, so I'm just wondering, are you sure it's not being calculated into the lot coverage?
It is not. Um, I think there, it is, I don't have the specific section of the ordinance.
I, can I just um step in for just one second? It's thirty-four point seven residential sheds. And it says, uh, subsection D, the shed will not count as lot coverage provided that a minimum of eight inches of crushed stone is placed under the structure and two feet beyond the drip line.
So you could have a four hundred square foot shed on your property?
No, you, you can't. You're, you're limited to a maximum in that same, further up in that section, you're limited to a hundred square feet.
Okay, and that shed is what, square footage?
That shed's light on this, thank you.
Nine by nine.
Okay, okay.
The, the one thing, actually, there, uh, you know, that's a technical variance for the shed is that uh, you're required to be ten feet from the side. So that where a variance would kick in.
He's only two point four feet.
Yeah.
Should this be added at this time?
It is. It's in his application.
All right, I'm sorry.
He said it's a existing shed.
I, I don't see the shed in the, in the application for.
It says additionally, the existing shed is located two point feet from the property line, which is a.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was looking at the grid. I apologize.
Yeah. It's in his handwriting.
Okay, in the handwritten one, all right.
Uh, Mr. Chair, just a question for our board attorney, just to.
Uh, Ms. Chair, just a question for our board attorney. Just to confirm, do we notice for the side yard setback on the shed?
Yes, it was.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Any other questions for Mr. Kaufman? Yes, Donovan?
Um, so, I, I'm sorry, I apologize. I couldn't read it and unfortunately I can't look at the documents on my screen right now. What's the lot coverage you're going from and to?
Uh, percentage or numbers? Well.
Well, both, sure.
Okay, uh, let's see. So we have existing lot coverage is twenty-eight point one, or twenty-one point eight one percent, where twenty's required and we're going to twenty-two point three percent. There was an increase of point four two percent, forty-five square feet net.
And when, when you did the, the, the prior work, which I guess was completed, I don't know, was it a couple of years ago?
Over the past few years, yes.
Yeah, it's been kind of been a, a process. So there was no additional, there was nothing additional. It was just the footprint of the house at the time, right? You just upgraded the house?
No, there was a shed. They had, there was a shed that was, uh, built, built further up on the hill, and it was basically falling down. And rather than repair it, the previous owners appeared to have put a perpendicular short section of hurricane fence, and then lashed the collapsing shed to it. So it was on its rear side and its lateral side held up by the fence. We just basically pulled it down and moved it off the hill because it was falling because of the, it was just not built properly. So we just moved it to the flat part and put it in the same place. It's my fault for not check, reading the ordinance properly. I saw ten by ten and said, we're great. We'll make it nine by nine and that's what we'll do. We had leftover building materials from the house. So it felt like an easy project. It was just my fault for not checking clearance from the fence.
The breezeway between the house and the garage, that was there prior, right?
No, because there was no garage. I actually made the garage part of the house and then to comply with zoning, had to build a two-car garage.
Oh, so, so when your lot coverage went over, and I'm sorry, did you finish up your questions?
Well, that's kind of what I was getting. I think, maybe you're getting that. It's like, when did you go to the twenty-one point eight percent, I guess? Because it doesn't sound like you were there prior to taking ownership of the house.
Uh, no, because the, you got the pool, the patio, the breezeway, there's a courtyard in between the house and the garage that's now, uh, pavers. Um, so yeah, there was a, a bunch added aesthetically to, to make what had to be done zoning-wise sort of work.
So if we approve a stairwell for, you know, point four percent of whatever, does that then approve everything else that was done without a variance? I guess that's a question for our attorney. I'm, I'm just.
Well, what, was it, have we established it was done with, without variance?
You ever see it? I don't remember seeing it.
I, I realize that, but, you know, I'm just asking for legal clarification. Did, did someone get a variance for all this or not?
According to the application, I don't have any record of a variance previously granted to go over the twenty percent. Okay, if we do grant.
Sorry, just as one follow-up. Um, for the other work that you've done, it, it's actually a permit for the, for the construction when it's done?
Oh, sure, yeah, everything.
So, so the township had permitted, whatever's there is, is the township has permitted to this point.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. So it has been.
Hold on a second. We know that he got a permit, but we don't know that he got a permit for what actually exists, right?
Well, if I could clarify from a procedural standpoint for everyone, generally what happens in this circumstances is, and everything on the property was permitted. So that's not even the issue. The placement of the shed.
How could you make that statement? I'm just curious. How do you know that?
On the record?
Because I looked at the files and the construction documents.
Okay, so you know that there's.
As the zoning officer.
You don't know that everything on the property matches the files because you haven't got an analysis to compare them?
Uh, well, I did as the zoning officer.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
So you went to the property and examined it and, and checked that everything that's built there is.
Well, if you let me finish.
Let her, let her finish.
Clarify.
Okay, but.
So the only, the one and only thing, the only one and only thing that was not provided, um, when the construction was done, and I don't know if it was, um, necessary in this case, I'd have to go back to the construction official. Sometimes in situations like this, when it's very, very close to a bulk requirement, sometimes the construction department will ask for what we call an as-built, which will ultimately determine where they are. So in other words, everything that was permitted that this, that the property owner did, was under all the bulk required, met all the bulk requirements and everything. There are many times when unfortunately something comes in, whether it be a little bit more of a patio extension, or you know, maybe this case, I, for whatever purposes, there was not an as-built done for a final certificate of occupancy, which would have determined that they were slightly over, which would have sent them to the board. That wasn't done. So when they came to review, to have the review for the staircase, it's over. So we have to send them to the board.
Right, Deborah, exactly what I was saying before, that the shed is not on there, right? I mean, so, you just said before that, that they have permitted everything that was built.
Yes.
But that's not true because there's things that are built that they didn't have permits for.
We weren't, we weren't aware, we weren't aware that they moved the shed. That's the simple matter. They moved the shed. So now they're coming for the variance for the shed, for where they put the shed. And that was brought up with him in the beginning. We discussed it. If they wanted to come for variance and keep the shed where it is, then they'd come to the board.
But my original, my original, and I don't mean to cause lots of problems, just, I, I, I think the board attorney maybe has to speak to this, is, and only because as Gary, I drive by this often, it's being around, right around the corner, is that I figured when you said twenty-one point eight percent, I figured, wow, okay, you've done a lot of work there. You, you were not at twenty-one, at point eight percent before you've done the work. Um, so, and I don't recall you ever coming before us, before, to go over that twenty. So do we have to approve the, not only the point five, but really the entire two point three percent, I guess, is what we're, right? Because twenty percent is the allowable amount in this zone?
Or, or has that already been somewhere?
Has that already been approved, like as?
By the town. But what's our legal standing on that?
Grandfathered in, or?
They're not, they're not grandfathered in, so to speak. They went over and now if this application gets approved, you're gonna be approving everything now that exceeds twenty percent.
Okay, alright.
Really not just approving the stairway, we're approving everything that's already there.
What was that, Gary?
We're not being presented with everything that caused it to go over. We're only being presented with this one stairwell.
No, you're absolutely right. Uh, we obviously don't know exactly what made it go over, uh, other than just a cement walkway around the pool or the, the, uh, you know, the breezeway.
I don't want to speculate. I don't bet anybody else. I'd, I'd rather not speculate on what did it, but.
That's what I'm saying. We don't know.
Yeah, I know. So, so I don't know how the last project, uh, what, what, what our administrator is saying is that everything was permitted, but how could it be? Because wouldn't it been, have been rejected in the construction permit approval process for being over lot coverage? Doesn't that make sense?
No, because the initial calculations came in under the lot coverage.
So then it's what I said before, something then was built without a permit or without.
No, Jerry, no.
Has to be one or the other.
No, no.
It was built beyond the permit, not without.
Correct. It was built and it's basically an air, an onsite situation that happens on a regular basis, you know, that things like this happen all the time, where the calculation was done incorrectly or, you know, something was added. So that now that you have this document in front of you, it has the actual calculation of the impervious coverage with the proposed stairwell. So what I'm saying to you is that everything was, it was absolutely done appropriately. Um, the construction department did not ask for what we call as an as-built, or if they have, it has not been provided yet. The as-built, once everything is said and done, which is really what you have in front of you now, with this proposed stairwell, the as-built would have determined that they were slightly over. Well, guess that, that's where we are now.
Okay, but I just, we have one thing with respect to the being over, under the percentage. Just a reminder to the board that the as-built current, the situation is if this lot had been the normal size for this zone at forty-five thousand square feet, we would be at sixteen percent lot coverage. So the, the sidewalk being slightly expanded less, this is the hardship for the entire project in its entirety. It is, uh, it is being brought to, it's being triggered by this stair, but this is this, the reality of the situation is that it's a comparable to a house that has sixteen percent coverage next door.
And, and bringing this up, I didn't bring it up to say that you're not deserving of this. I just don't want us to prove something that maybe we should be approving something else.
I understand.
That's what my kind of question is, is what should we be approving here?
I, I concur, and, and that's the basis of my questions too. And, you know, it's, it's obvious that something was built that wasn't permitted. No matter how you say it, what the semantics are, if they had a permit to, to build something and cover X lot coverage, now we have an application and it's X plus, something was built without a permit. That's, that's my assessment.
Jerry, I think you're saying it, it was built with a permit. It was built not, not in compliance with what they put their permit in.
That, that's the same as without a permit, Ed. If you have a permit to build a four hundred square foot building, and you build a five hundred square foot building, then you've built something that you didn't have a permit for, which is a five hundred square foot permit.
I understand what you're saying, but the way you said it, it sounds like they never bothered to get any permit at all.
No, 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 that's not what I said. Because I said it wasn't come up, I, it was, I acknowledged that they had an application, and they also had a permit.
Right.
But they built something beyond the scale of the permit. That's obvious.
Exactly.
Only thing that it could be. It's the only thing that it could be.
But as Deborah just said, those things do happen. So now they're coming back to get approval for what was over the permit and also the stair.
Right, without acknowledgement of the things that were over. So that's.
Well, obviously, the things that were.
I agree with, with my board colleagues that we should know what we're approving. We should, I know that at the beginning, this seemed like a very insignificant, de minimis application. We're just gonna, I thought this would be a record meeting. Right? I really did. I thought it'd be just, I, I, my, my, really, I was gonna make a statement right after, uh, Bill gave his testimony, that, you know, what's the earliest we can make a motion to approve an application at what point, right? That's what I thought we were doing.
Jerry, I think you're making it bigger than it is because we do know.
I just want to know what's going on. I just want to know what I'm approving, that's all.
Exactly, but what we're approving is exactly what we see before us. The pool, the garage, and the, and the breezeway was all, all built at one time, correct? Am I correct in saying that?
Yes.
Should we have, should we have our professionals maybe like chime in a little bit here and maybe help clear something down? Because right now we're going in circles and.
Right, I know that.
Well, Deborah, I disagree with you, Deborah. Excuse me one second. I think the board members have a right to ask questions and get valid answers, and that's not going in circles. It's not. It's finding out the facts. We, we are all asking questions to, to find facts. And we're being called to shut up, and I don't like that. I, I take exception to that.
I'm sorry, I just, that's, I would never say that.
Tell you to do that, Jerry.
Well, okay.
No.
Uh, before, before we go to our board engineer and board planner, are there any other questions from the board members pertaining to any part of this application, uh, that we have before us? Of, of, uh, Mr. Kaufman or, or the owner?
I have, I have, I have, I have. Uh, so first question, uh, are there any, is there any lighting proposed for the stair, the new stair going to the basement?
Lighting, is there any lighting?
Lighting, any lights?
Any lights, any light on the stairwell?
Is that directed at me? I'm sorry, Chris, are you?
Anybody, Chris, Bill, anybody?
I, I'm, I'm gonna assume that the answer to that is yes, but I don't have the drawing in front of me, but I would assume by code.
We have a downlight at the bottom of the stair, uh, remember, Johnson, just at the bottom. It's not indicated on that drawing, but there'll be a downlight to light in front of the door. It's required by code.
Right.
Above the door?
Yep.
Above the door facing down in the, uh, little.
Yeah, okay.
Nothing that will project out, though.
Okay, so nothing that would be seen from adjacent.
No.
Okay, good question.
It is on the, it is on the plan, I'm sorry. It's, I, I missed it. It's, it's, it's at the bottom of the stair, under the overhead.
Okay, very good. Um, any other questions?
Just, just one other, uh, regarding the shed, um, uh, uh, maybe this one for the homeowner. Could you just describe the, if, in terms of the, the shed in relation to the adjacent property, is there, as exists right now, any, any bushes or shrubbery or anything like that in that area that would, that would shield you of the, um, of the shed from the adjacent property?
It would shield the shed from the adjacent property? No.
Okay, well, there appear to be some trees behind it.
Yeah, I mean, they, they have a buffer on their side and I guess it's two point whatever feet off on my side, but, you know, they're pals. I could have had them come and tell you that it's not an issue. They're friends of mine, so. I mean, they, they have a, a buffer of shrubbery on their side. My, the shed is sitting in what is now a bed of, a sort of planted bed, running that, the entire side of that, of the property. But no, there's no shrubbery behind on my side of the property. They may have something. I'd have to go out and take a look, but I'm not sure. If. I, I did put windows on both the back of the shed and on the side of the garage facing their house, so they would not have to look at ugly, big fields of siding. So it doesn't look that bad from the, from the back.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, may I ask you a question?
Sure.
Uh, has your neighbor ever objected to the positioning of the shed close to his property?
No, not at all. Albinov is a friend, they're friends of mine. Absolutely not.
So they've, and where is it in location to where, was there a shed there previous to the?
Yes, there was a, there was a shed probably twenty or twenty-five feet to the north, a lo- right up against the fence, and it was, it was old. I mean, it was just falling down, so.
Right.
A mental note that we have to get rid of that at some point, and yet after the construction was done, it was still basically there. The, the piece of the fence was hanging off and there was just a remnant. And we had some construction materials left over. So I said, let's use that. We'll make it sort of look like the house. And that was, I looked up the code, less than ten by ten, I said, build it at nine by nine, and that's what we did. It was my fault for not looking at the, at the distance from the property line. And as I now understand it, if I complied, I think it might actually be in the shallow end of the pool. I'm not sure, but it would be awfully close.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
What is that, what is the shed used for?
Pool supplies, um, the, they have all the patio stuff, chairs, things like that, just.
Summer stuff that goes in there.
Yep, outdoor tools, gardening stuff, that kind of a deal, yeah.
Uh, any other questions before I go to the planner? No? Liz, do you have any comments on this?
Uh, I actually, you know, I, I think if I'm understanding the board's concerns, um, I, I think some of the, uh, the question is, you know, you have over, over coverage, right? And I think if my calculations are correct, and maybe Mr. Kaufman can double-check me, there's maybe six hundred square feet or something beyond what is currently permitted on the zone. And you're, you're only in, with this app, with just the stairwell, it's forty-five square feet. So, but I, really, why people or why, why a municipality would, um, require maximum lot coverage frequently has to do with stormwater and stormwater management and stormwater control and that sort of thing. And so I'm gonna try to successfully punt to Samantha is, is to whether she thinks that, that this, um, overage would represent any, should the applicant undertake any stormwater mitigation issues as it relates to their six hundred square feet, thereabouts, over what is permitted?
May, may I ask a question? Before, do, do the nine drywells that I have installed help that at all?
Of course.
Okay.
Why did you want nine drywells?
I'm sorry.
Is that a literal number, nine? Is that true?
That is true. That's what they required me to do.
The reason for installing them?
You'll have to ask Jeff Heiss.
I don't. That was done when you did the ex, the expansion of the house?
It was done first, and then when we did the pool, they made me dig it up again and add more.
That's an engineering requirement.
Yeah.
Not construction, that's an engineering.
I'm sorry.
Correct. I would think because the, um, your increase in impervious coverage at that time was by code, I believe it's four hundred square feet and more than a thousand square feet of disturbance total, that would kick you into what's called a minor development standards. And in order to meet those standards, your engineer designed nine drywells. Um, those don't appear to be identified on the plans. Could you maybe describe for, for my own notification and for the board where there's, are located? And do you know, does your entire dwelling drain to those drywells?
Not, uh, does the entire dwelling drain, not.
Like your downspouts from your garden?
Entire back does. The front does not. It.
Okay, so the front is pitched forward toward, toward your front lawn and the back has downspouts that go into drywells?
Back, the garage all go to, so on the, on the, um, the facility side of the back of the house drain to five, uh, five drywells on that side. The rest, everything else goes to the four on the, uh, side right behind the garage. They're laterally almost directly behind the garage.
Do you happen to know, just by chance, are these like thousand gallon drywells?
They look like, they look like forty-eight, they look like forty-eight inch sewer mains. They're orange, big, huge, giant.
Okay, so they're forty-eight inches round, probably about six or seven feet deep each.
Exactly right.
With a bed of, with maybe one or two feet of stone below around.
Exactly.
So that those have, I mean, I'm, I'm not gonna try and do the calculation very quickly in my head, but those probably have a pretty, pretty good capacity. And at that time, I would assume that they met, met the standard. And at that time, I would assume that they met, met the standard.
I'm not going to say anything, but I did not get a drop from Ida, so.
That is good news. I'm glad to hear that. Um, I'm gonna take it back a step just so I can ask some of the initial questions I had related to the stairs, and then we can kind of go from there. Um, these questions might be, um, for your architect. I see that a railing is proposed on, on the top on both sides of the sta, of the stair down. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And that would be a, a code compliant, UCC code compliant height and all of that?
Yes.
Is a gate proposed on the front?
No.
To provide any sort of safety mechanism? I, you know, as Chris is the homeowner, I don't know if you have children or, or, you know, young kids that are around, that that might be a consideration, that you want to put a, put a gate on the front so no one falls down?
Right before I bought this house, I fell down a flight of stairs and destroyed my wrist, so that is a point well taken.
Yeah, so those stairs might be something just to look at again, you know, you, you know, and you might not own the property forever, so future homeowners might appreciate that as well.
I agree.
Bill, looking at your architectural plans, I do see that your little, uh, we'll call it a landing at the bottom of the stairs there does have a drain proposed, and that's proposed to connect to a sump, so that will in turn take the drainage from everything that goes down the stairs from that vestibule into a sump in the basement and pump that out. Um, do you know where that's proposed to go to?
Yeah, that'll, that, that will connect to the existing storm system that he has installed back there, those drywells.
Okay, great. So this, this new impervious essentially will be offset by going into those existing drywells.
Correct.
And is that the same for, I believe I see an interceptor drain behind the, the retaining wall that'll be the back end of the stairs? Will that go to the same area?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so all, all the water from this proposed development seems to be, seems to be handled. Um, questions just related to the shed, since we had some discussion on that? You did, um, mention that it's under a hundred square feet in size. We talked about the setback. It's not in a front yard, and did you confirm for the record that there is a minimum of eight inches of stone underneath it and two feet beyond the drip line? Just so we can kind of get that on record, that it complies to the other criteria?
Yeah, yes, it has to be, it has to be a perimeter and, and at least eight inches underneath.
Okay, so I think going back to our, you know, last question, and that's, you know, Liz, I, I did the same calculation, and I had that total with the forty-five square feet, it looks like the total square footage over the twenty percent is about six hundred forty-two point six was my calculation, um, square feet. So that does, you know, that, that is an increase in impervious surface of more than four hundred square feet. This project we're looking at today, of course, in itself, isn't four hundred square feet and isn't more than an acre of disturbance. I think one way in which this might be handled pretty, pretty easily is, you know, a, a potential condition of approval that the, the capacity of the existing drywells be presented for review, and we can ensure that there's, that the, those drywells are sized appropriately to handle this six hundred and forty-two square feet of, of additional impervious that may or may not have been, you know, approved under, um, you know, the zoning, zoning official or construction official when some of these previous, um, developments were done. You know, by the description that the applicant has given, if there is nine drywells at forty-two or forty-eight inches wide and six to seven feet deep with a foot of stone all around it, um, you know, my, my inclination is that it's probably satisfactory for this additional six hundred and forty-two square feet. That's, that's not, in terms of runoff, that's not going to generate a, a whole lot. Um, I do have one more question. Your patio around the pool, is that a solid concrete patio, or is that pavers that it has set, that they're set in stand and?
Pavers.
Okay, so even if, even by code, the patio might be considered impervious, but that does allow for some infiltration?
Oh, yeah, sure.
So that, that's another, you know, another reason why I would support, I believe, you know, looking at what's already there and see if, if, um, you know, the numbers allow for that to cover this additional increase that we're looking at today.
I'm not sure if it makes a difference, but the space between the house and the garage is also pavers, and the front walkway are also pavers, so.
Yeah, and, and you know, I'm, I'm speculating a little bit, but in, in, in looking at the plan, I'm sure the garage wasn't enlarged in size. I'm sure the breezeway wasn't enlarged in size. It's probably the paver walkways and paver patios that, that, you know, I think that's probably where the discrepancy lies and where that, some of that impervious coverage is. You know, maybe something was supposed to be a squared off edge, and it came in and you ended up rounding it out or vice versa. Um, you know, we might not never know exactly where that number came from, but I'd be hard pressed to believe that the, you know, garage is suddenly an extra four hundred square feet bigger than what the construction code official allowed for. So, um, it's, it's probably somewhere in the, in the patio square footage.
What you're saying, by elimination of, of the items that would be increased, the patio would be the place where that would increase would most likely have.
Most likely, looking at the plans, looking at, if you look at the top, the, a top of that first sheet where the existing lot coverage schedule is, um, you know, like I said, I'd be hard pressed to think that the garage somehow ended up two or three hundred square foot larger. So I think that the most likely, um, culprit of the enlargement is in the patio area, because we have a patio walkway on the front. We have pavers on the front, we have a, a walkway in the back, and then we have that patio around the pool in the back. There's, there's quite a bit of.
Driveway changed at all?
Sorry?
Was your driveway changed at all? I see a little bump out on the driveway. Was that?
So I could back out of the garage, that little belly out.
There you go, you might, it might be there too, who knows?
I think that's like eighty square, I don't know, or a hundred square feet or something. I can't remember. And that was actually a mistake by the guys who did it, believe it or not. That was supposed to be left as lawn with no cobs behind it, so I could back up into it and have mesh underneath, and they blew it. So if you want me to pull it up, I can.
Well, no one's saying that at this point. We just wanted to find out where it was, but that could be one of the areas.
Yeah.
But that, I, I completely forgot about that, so it's definitely an additional, whatever size that is, eighty or a hundred square feet, that's part as well.
Well, that's good. I think that helps us at least get a little bit more, more clarification on, on some of the changes out there. But, um, at this point, my recommendation would be, um, you know, a review by your architect or engineer to, um, you know, see if what's out there is satisfactory for this additional six hundred and forty-two point six plus or minus square feet.
Samantha, it'd be helpful to have the, um, a survey showing the drywells.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, a lot of times, the only, if, if you don't have the exact location of those drywells identified on a prior plan, you may, because they were submitted to the construction official, um, they're often identified. Each one of them should have a, an inspection port at grade, and they can generally determine the location of them based on those inspection ports.
They're on a plan somewhere. I've seen them. When they did the pool, when they did the pool, they, they showed them.
That should make it very easy to, to take a quick review, come up with the calculation of how large they are, what the capacity is, and compare that to, to what we have out there today.
Okay. Any questions of our experts by our, uh, board? No? Are there any members of the public that would like to ask questions of the applicant or his, uh, architect?
Members of the public going once? Going twice? No members of the public, Mr. Chairman?
Well, that's a, that's a, that's a, an unusual sight. We lost our ratings. Uh, but, um, all right, so, um, are there, is there any other testimony that you would like to put before us?
None that I can think of unless there are other questions.
Okay, I just, I have to ask that question, because I want to know if there's anything else you have to show us.
Question?
Yes.
Uh, just for the applicant, um, as a condition of approval, you're gonna install a gate?
Uh, if it's required, absolutely. I mean, I probably will do it just for my own safety, but if you want.
Yeah, I think we'll, we'll make that as part of a condition.
Sure.
And we also have to have a condition that you're, that whatever, if this is approved, that whatever plans you submit, uh, to be signed has to show where those drywells are, and we have to have the drywall calculations, uh, done so that we know that it handles that six hundred. Was it six hundred, Samantha?
Uh, six, yeah, six hundred forty-two plus or minus, but, but well said. That's, that's exactly what I would recommend as that condition.
Okay. And that's all acceptable?
For me, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, real quick, and you stipulate the lights will be pointed down properly shielded, so you won't spill onto neighbors' property?
Is that a yes?
Yeah, yeah, for me, yes, absolutely. I don't, I can stand looking at other people's lights, so I would do that for sure.
And all your neighboring properties are developed. You can't acquire any additional property to conform with the forty-five thousand square feet?
I don't know. I don't, I mean, unless Albinov wants to sell me something, but I don't think so.
That's all my questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. Um, any other last minute questions by the board? Uh, okay. Do, uh, can I, uh, I'm gonna start the, um, deliberations. Would you like to start, Brian?
Sure, yes, thank you. Um, I, I'm in favor of the application. I believe the, the lot coverage, uh, overage is, is a, is a result of the, of the undersized lot. Uh, I believe with the conditions that were mentioned, particularly regarding the stormwater, uh, management, that's, that's already on the site. Uh, if that can be demonstrated to be able to handle, um, any, any excessive, excessive, uh, water runoff, um, that would, um, definitely a, address that concern. Um, I believe that, you know, the, the proposed stair, uh, I think it, it makes this more functional. It's also adds additional safety from the basement. Uh, it's consistent with the, the zone and the master plan. I think it advances purposes of the municipal land use law. Um, I, I, I don't really see any detriments to the, to the application, and I'm in favor.
Before we go on with some more deliberation, was there any members of the public that wanted to make a comment? I neglected to ask. I assume there were no members of the public, or Deborah, are there any members of the public out there?
Uh, there are members of the public, members of the public, if you have any comments, uh, for this application, now would be the time. Going once? Going twice? All good.
Okay, great. Okay, I didn't want to forget that aspect. I didn't know if there were any out there at all. All right, uh, Scott?
Okay, I, first of all, with the stairwell, I don't see any problem. I don't see any neighbors, uh, having any problems with that. The downlight, it's not going to affect anybody. Uh, the drywells seem to be put in place. Uh, everything seems to be fine, so I'm in favor of this, uh, applicant.
I think it's all been said before, with the, with the provisos that Mr. Kaplan had, uh, clearly stated, um, about, uh, the, um, the gate for the stairs and, uh, and having the paperwork done to bring this up to snuff. Uh, I see this as a positive for the homeowner, and I don't see any negatives for the neighborhood as it's not going to be seen by anybody. Uh, I'm in full favor of this.
Jerry?
Uh, I don't think I have much to add that hasn't been said already. Um, I think it's very insignificant. Um, I think that, you know, those nine drywells, uh, they sound like they are going to handle the capacity, but I think our engineer is going to prove that. I'm happy about that. That would be the only thing that I'd be concerned with, so if that's a condition of approval, I am fully, uh, in, in, in support of it.
Thank you. You sound like a, uh, air traffic controller with those things on.
Yeah, that's somewhere in my headset.
I know, I know. Jerry, go ahead.
I push some tin on the side, Ed.
Yes.
Uh, I, I think that it's, uh, it's interesting that such a simple, uh, application became, uh, potentially quite large, and I'm really glad that in the wonderful improvements you've made to the property, Chris, that, uh, you, you've, your, your engineers, your architects, and whoever worked on your team, you know, accounted for that stuff, and that our building department, uh, I guess had required it. And, uh, as we're approving the, basically, whatever overages it, it has, um, altogether, that will make it easier for you, you know, going in the future, if you ever do anything else with the property, it's gonna be kind of like we've, you, you, you've got this all, other stuff clear. Is that the way I understand? Is that right, Mr. Kaplan?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Ro, Mr. Rosenberg?
Um, yeah, I think that pretty much everything's been said, although I apologize for opening up the can of worms that I opened up. I think that it's definitely, it definitely in the long run helps you out, probably, uh, to, that we get this properly done now. Uh, and I would be in favor of this application.
Ben?
I'm in favor of the application. I think that with the conditions especially, it's a, um, nice upgrade to the property and will not have any detriment to the neighborhood, so in favor.
Very good. Okay, uh, I also, uh, would feel that, uh, it's an improvement in neighborhood. I think that, uh, I'm glad that we clarified the overage on the lot coverage for the initial, uh, build that you had, so that we can get that straightened out, because, uh, we don't like to leave things hanging like that, because if you ever go sell the property and the owner finds something like that, it may impede you. But at least now we're dealing with that, and the stairwell, uh, is a good idea. It's, uh, hidden away from, you know, the back of the house. Uh, it's pretty obscure. Uh, you have the nine drywells. I think that's the most I've ever heard on a piece of property, but that's.
They treated the whole thing like new construction, so everything was like brand new construction, basically, which I'm grateful for. It's fine.
It looks good. Uh, I would also be in favor of it with the condition of the fence, the downlighting, and the, uh, specification of the drywall locations and the confirmation of their capacity, uh, to, uh, to cover. All right, uh, so can I hear a resolution, please? The board attorney?
Oh, if this is a, um, as I believe it will be, a, a motion to approve, it's going to be a motion to approve a minor site plan approval with a variance for the shed setback and for the lot coverage, uh, going from what is currently existing twenty-one percent plus to approximately twenty-two percent plus, with the condition that the lights are pointed in a downward direction without spillage neighboring properties, that the survey be revised to include the location of all the drywells and a, uh, certification by the township engineer that the drywells can handle, uh, the capacity of the stormwater runoff and a gate on the top of the stairwell.
So I hear a motion to approve that resolution.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call.
Yes, Mr. Aronio.
Yes.
Mr. Grosskopf?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes.
Mr. Hane?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Johnson?
Yes.
And Chairman Gerecht?
Yes. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thanks, everyone. Good night.
Good health.
Yeah, thank you, everybody. So before everybody goes, let's make sure we don't have anything else to talk about. You guys can go, but. I think that's it for us, right?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Uh, our last meeting or our last deliberations, we had a very interesting, uh, we, we did our initial thoughts, and then we had a, a discussion again, and it was more of an open discussion amongst each, to each other. And we, 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 um, I think you remember, and I was wondering if there's anything in our, um, protocol to say that we can't do that more often?
Uh, there's nothing in the protocol that says we can't do that.
Okay.
Um, that's, uh, you know, so that's why at the end, I always say, is there anything else we need to talk about or?
No, but I mean, during an application, not Chris's application tonight.
Yeah.
That's over and done with, but I'm just saying that in the last meeting, uh, we had the application before us, we all gave our initial thoughts, and then we kind of brought, we, we were kind of getting ready for a final vote, but then a discussion broke out. I might have even started it, um.
Yes.
Blame me, go ahead. And, and I was just, just wondering if that's something that, uh, it's not regular order.
We, we try not to go beyond, once we stop deliberations, we tend not to want to reopen them only because it makes it confusing.
Hmm.
So what I would say is that for the sake of clarity and for the sake of, of procedural expediency and, and, and uniformity, I would say that when we deliberate, we should bring all this out. Once we deliberate and a resolution is put before us to move, there should be no more deliberation, because then it gets, it gets muddled up, because then we're reopening discussion, we're reopening the, the application. So in a way, I prefer we don't do that, uh, because that's, that's kind of very, uh, piecemeal, and i- it's confusing. Uh, we should be able to handle all deliberation. If there's any question before I ask the attorney to give us a resolution, it should be handled at that time. Uh, you know, if you have any, if any board member has an issue before the resolution is read or during it even, fine, but once it's read and I call for a motion to move it, at that point, we don't want to go back and open it up again. You know, you know what I mean, Tom? It, it's kind of messy at that.
Mr. Chairman, may I, may I say something?
Yes.
If you don't mind, um.
Yeah, no.
So, whe- when, when, when there, there's a motion on the floor, right, and the lawyer can tell me if I'm incorrect about this, we can discuss that motion, right? Um, so if anybody has questions or comments about the, the, the.
So if anybody has questions or comments about the the specificity of the motion, what what we're approving or not approving, we can still discuss that and get clarification. But I think once the motion has been seconded, I think at that point, then we have to bring it to a vote. Is that right?
Yeah, but that that's.
That's my understanding of the rules.
But that's different what you're saying. You're saying just about the motion wording or the clarification.
Exactly. At that point, we're done with deliberations. We're on to a motion now. So once there's a motion made, our discussion should be related to the motion itself.
Right, but what Thomas was talking about was almost opening up the the the.
The deliberations.
Deliberations again. That's what he was talking about.
I think that should be rare. I think that should be rare, not not a common.
I wasn't looking, Jerry, I wasn't looking for it to be common. I just wanted to know since this is our first official meeting of this year. For us to discuss any possible changes, we're gonna be hit with some tough cases this year, I'm sure. And let's just say Brian brings up a good point. And that makes me rethink my point or brings up a question based on his thoughts. If if I've already if I've already deliberated, then I can't talk again.
Oh, no, no, you could talk again.
No, I don't think so. Yeah.
Again.
Okay.
That's not what I'm saying. But what Jerry said is, once the motion's made, we can discuss the motion wording and then we second it. But I we can't, I don't want to reopen the deliberations. But just because I you've done your talking, if somebody else brings up something, you can say with the chairman, may I add to my deliberation? Because of based on what he said, fine, I have no problem with that. Just let's keep it doing deliberations and not move it beyond the motion.
Perfect. Clear. Thank you, sir.
All right. Yeah, I I I want to make sure. One thing I I want to make absolutely certain of is everybody has their say. And everybody has a word that they put in and that they're allowed to talk about the the application and get and air everything out. Because as we saw tonight, things get aired out, they get hashed out. And we come up with a better resolution or a better solution to the problem. Because sometimes an applicant doesn't realize that there's an issue until we bring it up. So it's always better to to talk about things, but in its place, not, you know, out of order, basically. So and there's no reason you can't talk more than once during deliberations. Don't don't get that impression.
I do it all the time, right, Ed? And I do that all the time, don't I?
Oh, you talk all the you talk out of turn all the time, Jerry. But no, it's 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 I I don't ever want to suppress anyone's thought pattern because that's what we're here for to think and to analyze. And that's what our job is, so. Is there anything else we have to consider before we, any old business, any new business, Deborah, that you know of?
No, I'm gonna start working on. I really wanted to have the annual report ready. But, you know, with changing of the guards lately and, you know, I didn't get to where I needed it to be. So within the next month, I'll start putting together the annual report. We have, we definitely have some new applications coming your way. So I'm hoping to get the status report out to you.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask.
Next week.
Okay.
Yeah, because.
The next meeting, what's on the next meeting?
So next meeting, you are starting the site plan for forty four Plainfield Road, the Jonathan Rocker application.
Oh, that'll be fun.
In two weeks from tonight, yes. So I think it'll be really good. I think that, you know, we the professionals have met, our professionals have met with their professionals to discuss some of the, you know, the initial issues. So I think that, you know, it's gonna be, they'll be good to go, you know, get ready.
When I say fun, I mean all the public comment is gonna be fun because we already had a taste of that. And I'm I'm not expressing a judgment on it. I'm just saying it's gonna be very lively.
We should stop talking about that application right now, probably.
But I know I'm not talking about the application.
No, I'm just, yeah, I'm just stating what's what's coming forward. So that's what you're you.
And then what is that the only one that's scheduled for next time?
That's the only, oh, yeah, that that one will most like based on public participation, which we are in.
Yeah.
Correct. And then I would I would also, I saved March first open for them as well. So we have, then I have two residential scheduled for the fifteenth.
Okay.
Which is one twenty five, which have been on the the status report, mind you, one twenty five Mountain Avenue. If everybody remembers, those are the retaining walls. That have been there for a while and then three hundred South Northfield, which I think that's a pool, another pool, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. Anyway, so.
It's right next to you, Jerry.
Yeah, it's close. I don't know which house it is, but I'm sure it's.
Are you within the two hundred feet?
I probably am, so we gotta see. I don't know which house it is.
Actually.
I'm sure I'll get a notice if if I am, right? Has it been noticed already?
Jerry, I'll let you know because I'm actually waiting for the two hundred foot list as we speak. So if your name appears on it, I'll let you know.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
And so will the applicant.
Yes.
So will the applicant, yes.
All right, as long as you're invited in the pool, you're okay, right?
That's right, everybody in the pool.
All right. Okay, great. Thank you for giving us an update on our future hearings.
Deb, can I ask, can for forty four Plainfield, could we, can we get that a little earlier?
Yeah, you know what? I'll send it out tomorrow.
Yeah.
Okay.
Plans out tomorrow.
That's a lot earlier.
Sure. I don't believe that the the professionals report, Samantha, are you gonna be making changes to your report?
Based on the conversation I had with the the engineer today, it sounds like they don't anticipate making changes to the plans. You know, they're gonna testify to a lot of the comments and how they're going to address them. So I don't think that I will be writing a formal letter at this time at least. Okay. Maybe something supplemental about stormwater, that's all.
Okay, so board members, I will send the plans to you tomorrow electronically. And we'll, when the reports are, when both professionals tell me their reports are ready to go, I'll send those as well.
All right, sounds good. All right, if there's nothing else, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you guys for another year.
Night, guys. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations and Vice Chair and the new board member. Congratulations.
Yes, Ben, welcome aboard. We'll have a new one next time, right? We have a new person next time? All right.
We will. Yep, we'll have another new person next time, so.
Good, okay.
All right, everybody.
Talk to you later.
Have a good night.
Bye.
Have a great night.